I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call our work session meeting to order. Reminder that this meeting is being recorded. We have Commissioner Albertson on video. Are there any additions or deletions to the?
No additions or deletions, but I changed the GIS position to a timed item. That'll be at 10:30.
Okay, thank you. Right. Well, first up is Mr. Kevin Hawk with Local Access Road Sign Replacement.
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna give these two copies to you guys. I should have one already. I only scanned between. Uh, we won't need that just right yet, but in a minute, can you have a copy? I have two, uh, two items, as you said, but then if, if it's possible, I have some updates since it's been a while since I've been here. If time allows. You wanna talk about the local access road, um, sign repair first?
Sure.
So, um, I, I wanna say historically, but historically, as far as I've managed the road department, um, there's been maintenance needs outside of the initial road naming. And I think it's thirty, I think it's thirty-one A is the county ordinance, and I didn't actually make a copy of that. But that's the ordinance that allows for what I believe is, correct me if I'm wrong, three people, three residences on a road, and then it goes through and can go through the naming process. But in that ordinance, there's no means of the cost that will be incurred later on for theft, vandalism, all the things that go along with foot signs of. I just handed you guys a copy of the actual language of three sixty-eight oh thirty-one, which is the ORS discussing the rules around local access roads. Attached to this agenda is the most recent cost that we collected, um, to put a new sign on, is it Carrico?
Carrico Road.
Carrico Road, which is just past Milliken a mile and, um, attaches to Christmas Valley. So those signs that are on local access roads, the road department has been, um, on local access roads that intersect with a county right-of-way. We've been fixing those signs under that theory that the road is a named road and it's in the right-of-way. So we've been fixing that sign. There, there are a lot of them though, and there's probably even more than we don't know about on intersecting local access roads. We only usually find out about those when either you guys receive a call or we do to find out who replaces it. The planning department absorbs the cost of the initial install, but like I said, there's no, to my knowledge, no formality in that ordinance to either collect, um, some sort of dollar amount to be able to maintain these signs throughout the fiscal year. This is just one example. It was a hundred and thirty-two dollars just for the materials, but the total cost of just this sign was two hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty-nine cents. So that, that actually doesn't really encompass the total cost. That, we, we did that while we were there, and so we shaved, if you will, time off of that, true time. But if, if there's several of them, then we try to make a specific day out of it, build the signs or however we need to. Um, but the materials are the, are a big cost of that. So bringing this to you guys because in the ORS, it's the governing body that decides how, how all this truly gets paid for, if you read the ORS.
Right. They've laid out three options for moving forward. Uh, well, if it's an emergency or if the county road official recommends the expenditure, and public use of the road justifies the expenditure proposed, and the county governing body enacts an order or resolution authorizing the work and designating the work to be either a single project or a continued program. And so I think, you know, you and I have had some discussion as to try and figure out whether or not we can get something laid in stone. Maybe with the board as to what the process will be going forward, maybe as a continued project.
The, the, not to interrupt real quick, just to interject this. The kind of unofficial process, if you will, has been to use the subsection A there where the road official recommends expenditure. And that is only because, like I said before, the signs that are in the actual county right-of-way or local access road that is contiguous or, uh, joins the county right-of-way, those for nine-one-one purposes, we have been trying to.
Replace.
Yep. But again, I, there are a lot of them that don't get fixed. There's a lot of them that are, have been stolen. Um, that's actually a separate issue, how these roads are named. I have some theory on how to fix that problem, but that's a, that's a different issue if we decide to go that route. But putting something in stone or, or maybe making an addendum, if it's possible, to the ordinance as to how dollars get collected, actually pay for the maintenance and, and replacement and so forth of these signs would be good to have so that we can have something in, in, on paper.
Commissioner, didn't you talk about this? Somebody, we've talked about this. Yeah, I, I kinda shared with you guys that he would, that Kevin might be coming to us with a proposal or something in the future for the work session so that we could have some discussion. Because it, I get a lot of phone calls on this and.
We do too. We get, we get a lot.
Get a lot of them. And Carrico Road was one of the most recent ones. And a lot of times we have these, we, we do have some roads with some interesting names that people like to steal the signs of. And, uh, so if we are going to create a program, one of the things that Kevin and I have talked about is if we're going to create a program where we have to continually replace certain signs that have funny names like Butte Valley or what have you, there might be even a reasonable argument for changing the name of the road if we're going to continue to expend general fund dollars or road dollars to replace these signs. Because we do want people to have the signs that they originally paid for and then for nine-one-one purposes and others. And, but how do we pay for it? What's appropriate? And, um, you know, how do we wanna do it? Because it's not appropriate that the planning department or the building department.
The planning absorbs the initial costs as, as it reads in the, in the ordinance.
But Jennifer usually is one getting the phone calls.
Yep, she gets a lot of them. She gets a lot of them as well. And there's two, there's actually two separate issues here that don't have to be dealt with together. They're just, it, it, one, one helps the other one out. The first being, how do we, how do we continue to fix these signs and pay for the cost? It's coming out, right now it's coming out of the road department budget.
Correct.
That's the, that's the road authority's concern, if you will. Second issue is after we've replaced certain signs so many times, then we need to entertain why it has that name. I, I, I can sit here and tell you several signs that I've replaced just about on a yearly basis, and there's, there's no reason to keep doing that. It's a, it's a clever name or it looks good on a college frat wall or something, but we need to, we need to make a change so that we're not throwing dollars out.
Road B.
Well, truthfully, there are, there are a lot of places in, in the country that name things from south to north, and they name them from west to east, which is how that should be. And numbers, um, in sequential order from, in those directions and letters from west to east or vice versa would fix a lot of this problem because it's not gonna be too many people that are gonna steal a C road or a D road or a.
Yeah. Number three or four, what have you.
That, it'll, that will fix a lot of things. So anyway, like I said, two separate issues, bringing it forward to find out where these dollars get paid from, because right now we're coming out of the road budget.
Again, this is a work session. We wanna make sure that you guys have the full story, and that you have the ORS's in front of us.
That, to, to, just to, I guess, mention one more thing. I just gave you guys a copy of just one, as true as a collected cost as I could, um, for just one sign. Like I said, when my guy goes there, we either are in Christmas Valley working on other things and we go do this with downtime, and it, it's all in a, a manner to, you know, save as much money as we can in replacing signs that are basically stolen, so. And I shouldn't say they're all stolen. I mean, people, the hay trucks, you know, people run over them, they, they cut a corner and they, they run them down. But all that work has to be done. There's a cost incurred with all of it.
So I wrote, so I wrote a, that total that you're showing us is a hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty cents for one sign. I wrote a note saying, uh, two hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty-nine cents including labor, but that's not a true cost because you also did other work.
Um.
Is that right?
That's probably the cheapest cost to collect.
Yeah, closer to three hundred or more.
Correct, yeah.
Per sign.
Because there, um, there's only one hour there charged to that truck. You know, when we go pound new posts, there, there's also the, we usually make a one call in case there is utilities. Christmas Valley is, as you know, being developed and there's gonna be utilities. We can't just go pounding the posts in the ground because as simple as it may seem to put a sign post up, the liability of hitting the utility is not worth the cost of the sign. So there's time and effort that's not truly documented here in making a one call and following up on that and managing the whole system, so.
And Carrico Road, you did replace the post as well, correct?
I think that was a total replacement, if I'm not mistaken, although I don't see the base on here. Oh, yeah, the sign base is on here, but that sign, that sign base cost is not a new cost. That was because we have a power. Okay, so however, it needs to be collected for, or billed for, and who incurs that cost. It'd be nice if that was predetermined.
Commissioner Albertson, did you have anything you wanted to add on this? Questions?
I just, I agree with Kevin. I, I'm with, I'm for, uh, numbers and letters. It's a lot like, less likely to have to replace them. If they wanna go ahead and name a road and, but if that sign is stolen, a number goes up in its place or a letter, and then go from there. But I don't know if the nine-one-one, it'll have to be lined out with nine-one-one also. Lake Carrico Road could be, be or whatever it's gonna be also, but just have to figure that out. How do you wanna, how do you wanna build it out, Kevin? What do you think, Scott?
Um, I, I just wonder, and it, and it, I don't know that it has to be a huge dollar amount. I mean, if you take, if you say that on average, we're gonna fix fifteen or twenty of these and just do the math, five or six thousand bucks somewhere to be reimbursed for the time to do it. And like I say, we, we can, we can kind of collect these, um, four or five at a time and then go fix them, and that also keeps the cost down. Where the, the, the naming of the signs though, um, when you read the ordinance, is a, is a dollar amount that comes from the general fund, the planning department. So the, these are two different, um, dollar kitties, if you will. Uh, road versus the road department, not versus as in the separation of.
So the planning department pays for the initial sign installation?
Yep.
And then the road department pays for replacements?
Well, yeah, I mean, unofficially, that's how it's been, that's how it's been going.
Okay. So do you want us to, next budget year, set aside a certain amount of funds? How do you wanna do it?
And you're also talking about a reimbursement for the cost that.
Well, yeah, this fund that I'm assuming Commissioner Albertson's talking about. So we could, we could collect costs for one year, so you had a true assessment, although I think once the talking point to the public has always been, this is local access road and the road department doesn't manage the local access. If we're gonna say that we are, then I think we're gonna get inundated with, uh, signs that haven't, you know, haven't been up or have been stolen for quite a long time. And they're not gonna be signs that intersect with a county road right-of-way. They're gonna be out in the middle of anywhere. Where any local access road, you know, crosses. For instance, I think the last one that got named and I, I wanna say it was Wagon Wheel Road. We built the signs for that and it was, I think it was over a thousand dollars just for the, because of the sheer number of intersections that, that that road goes through.
Yeah, basically to steal wagon wheel, I guarantee you.
Yeah, so that's, I use that as an example because it's, you know, it looks, looks good to hang on your garage wall, I guess, or whatever. But, um, and like, that's why I say it's two separate issues. But some, some dollar amount that is allowable in, maybe even in Darwin's budget that is attached to the, and maybe an addendum has to be, I don't know, that's up to you guys how, uh, in that ordinance. Because it's not, it's not clearly labeled anywhere.
If, if we put it in Darwin's, then we won't have to change the ordinance. Otherwise, if we we're not really accomplishing anything if we don't, you know, say where it's gonna go.
I don't, I don't know if we'd actually have to change the ordinance. I guess this may be a legal question for council, but you have, it lays out in the ORS that if the bo, if the governing body enacts an order or a resolution authorizing the work, maybe that's all that's needed. And, or we, we set in place with that resolution or order, a single project or a continued program so that, you know, there's the funding's there, and we can go through and create another line item on the next budget year.
So to, to help, along with work, the direction I think you're going, and maybe makes it a cleaner process is we can, I can, I can collect costs in any timeframe that you want. I mean, we can come to the budget at the end of this fiscal year and, and show you a report of how much time specifically I can make special project. That's actually how I collected this cost.
Right.
And we can make a special project in the, in the IRS system. And when we do this work, we'll collect the dollars at the end of the fiscal year or maybe in May or whatever it may be, just to give you time and say, okay, well, there was sixty-five hundred dollars this spitball that was incurred in replacing or fixing or maintaining these signs.
Yep.
Then the, the transfer, it, it could be part of your budget process to say, okay, well, there's sixty-five hundred bucks here that needs to be paid back to the roads for fixing these signs. It could be that simple.
I, I like it that way.
Because it's, it's not difficult for me to collect the cost. We just have to, I just have to kind of train my sign guy to know that when he's doing that type of work, we're gonna collect it.
Yeah.
Such, so if that's what we wanna do, then.
I think that's kind of where we're headed. Who are you collecting?
Yeah, I, I think it makes it a lot cleaner.
How, how do you mean from?
Well, who, who are you collecting the costs from?
Well, they, they, it'd be any of the employees' equipment or materials that were associated with doing the project. But in, in our internal process of how we do our time cards and how we collect it in our own computer system, the IRS system, we can make a special project that when we go. Yep, when we go do whatever sign, then it goes to that cost. And then at the end of the fiscal year, I can disclose that to you guys, because otherwise it's just coming, it comes out of my sign line item.
Right.
Whatever the dollar amount is, two hundred dollars to as high as whatever allows for. I would bet that once the phone calls start coming and we don't say that we're not going to manage local access, but we actually do it, we're gonna find that there's, it's gonna be a job to pile up. There's gonna be a lot of them.
Right.
So just, I don't know how many, I'm just saying.
Well, there's several that, like, there's, um.
I have, I have five of them right now on the dash of my pickup, so there's, I mean, there's several of them, just from people calling me saying, hey, this sign's down. It is a nine-one-one issue. It's not that we're deaf to it. We, we wanna make sure that people know how to get around. The frustrating part is when the same sign gets vandalized or stolen several times, then that's a separate issue. But, but if the judgment or your decision will be however tomorrow, that we just collect it for a fiscal year and then settle up, if you will, for lack of a better term, at the end, then we can do that easily.
Any other discussions? All right.
Thanks. Um, the second item here that I have is the memorandum of agreement. There's actually two there. Um, the first one that you're looking at would be for Cottonwood, and the second one would be for.
Hogback.
Hogback. They're, uh, they're the same document. On the first page of those, um, historically, the, um, it doesn't matter, it can be the, the chair, but the liaison commissioner for the roads has signed that. I provided to you guys so you can look through it and see exactly what the, what the costs are. The, the one thing, if you look on page three, I'm just gonna use Cottonwood as an example. I think the Hogback one was just slated a little bit more. The, the one thing that concerns me on these agreements, and there's, it's a, I don't wanna say it's environmental like it's, birds and salamanders environmental, it's a, it's a fiscal environmental issue that these estimates were done in twenty eighteen and we don't live in that same dollar amount. So, um, the dollars that you see there, uh, are, are probably not gonna go as far as for material as what I would have liked in twenty eighteen, just because of, you know, the economics of the economy. If you look on page three in the, under the subsection F, which is the project budget, it talks about the partner match ten point two seven percent. So if you go down that first column, fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars is what we will have matching kind to put all this aggregate on. Specifically, what I'm talking about right now is Cottonwood Road. Let me just look real quick. I think it's sixty-eight, yeah, sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy on Hogback Road. That, that won't be, it'll be dollars, but it'll be matching kind worth of dollars. Both of these projects include six inches, six inches of gravel being installed on four and a half plus or minus miles of gravel roads. They're federal land access. They were, they were put in, in the end of twenty seventeen or the beginning of twenty eighteen for these fiscal years, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. So that's why we're talking about now.
So on Lord Cottonwood, I assume you'd start from the highway?
Yep, it'll start at, uh, one forty and go to the second cattle guard, which is at the Forest Service boundary, just before you get to the actual reservoir.
Okay.
Steep grade.
Yep.
And on the Hogback, it'll be from the end of the asphalt to Flagstaff intersection, which on the Hogback is the most heavily traveled section going to the recreation and mines and all that, so. We hope to be able to work with, uh, local engineer and kind of choose our specifications for rock as we go through this whole process. And actually, that's one other thing I wanted to kinda separate from this MOA, but at least discuss that. Our, our goal in these grants is to put as much of these dollars on the road as possible. We wanna see every cent go to the material that we're purchasing. That was, the initial intent was how we fix these roads, and it always was a, a complication for the expenditure of the aggregates to be, you know, produced and, and to be, and to be bought. This grant will pay for a lot of that. So in order to move forward, I'll need, uh, signature on those two first pages that'll meet you very soon.
So Kevin, uh, the flat grant has changed quite a bit since twenty eighteen. And, uh, it hasn't been all that popular with counties due to the rule changes.
The, the, the federal, the federal land access grants, um, projects, when I first started this position in, in twenty sixteen, they were very, very friendly to rural counties that have a lot of roads, mileage managed to public lands. Throughout the years, they have, um, added what is called their stewardship and oversight, which doesn't allow for as much county-delivered work. So it's, it, it's, um, allowed for counties that are certified to install federal aid projects. Um, the, I don't really look at these as federal aid. This is a grant. Federal aid to me is damages by Mother Nature that you need aid for, but that's their language. And so these projects were purposely organized, if you will, uh, structured to be less than three-quarters of a million to a million dollars to allow for us to do this work ourselves. And we were, at the time, we put in for four of them, but we were actually approved for these two. So they are good. It's a good, it's a good thing. It helps us manage roadways that we normally would not have the dollars to put better material on, and that's, that's what we need, was the grant dollars to allow for the better material, the expense of rock crushing and the better material.
Well, we'll keep beating the drum to allow that work to be done locally.
Yeah. Once, once, uh, we move forward with this, um, I'm actually working through the NEPA process right now. And I'll, we don't have enough time to talk about that here today, um, but.
Oh, NEPA.
Once we get through some of these things, then we'll be able to, uh, put out for bid rock contracts for the volume of both of these projects. Trying to work with local source in Warner Valley, because as you know, it's a few and far between where material can be, um, suitable, suitable material. We've done some, uh, preliminary testing to make sure that the material that we'd like to use will hold up over the course of time, and I believe it will. And then these projects are, I have a note right here, if you, give me a second to find it. Possible start dates for the Hogback project will be March or April of twenty twenty-three, which is next spring. And Cottonwood will be August to September of twenty twenty-three. The Hogback one would need to go first because the construction right that is allowable out of Honey Creek, we try never to take water after, you know, everybody starts to spread water for irrigation, so that's why we're shooting for March. Is there any other questions on those two projects?
And you're squared away on exactly what you're going to be needing on the engineering side?
Um.
And what the specs are and everything?
So, yeah, we're, we have specifications that we like. Um, I've, I've already, uh, started to begin the process with consulting the local engineering, Anderson Engineering, because they're close and, um, they have knowledge, local knowledge that, you know, uh, others might not have. We will have to have exemptions when it comes to the, I shouldn't say exemptions, I should say exceptions when it comes to actually getting the specifications approved, because the plastics level, not to get into the highway design too much, but the plastics level and the finds and the dirt that we'd like to see in this rock will actually be increased over what we typically like to specify because it's a binding agent. So we're very dry and it will help hold. will actually be increased over what we typically like to specify because it's a binding agent, so we're very dry and it will help hold things together. Um, the other thing that I'm looking at, and I went and studied in, in, and some myself and some in other counties, uh, is the use of some asphalt binder product that can be put on top or mixed in with the top layer that will help as a binding agent for longevity. More for stabilization of it and less for dust control, but to stabilize the project to minimize the future maintenance.
Sounds good.
Good. There's nothing else on that subject? We go to your updates.
Okay, I'll try to go, I'll try to go through these here, um, pretty quickly. So we finished up our surface treatment program in Christmas Valley. We completed all the fog seal. Um, there probably is concerns as to why we haven't painted the lines yet. We, we are on the list to receive line paint as soon as it becomes available and we'll put it on the road as soon as I physically get it. This is the, this is the strangest year of managing um, road maintenance that I've ever experienced. Uh, acquiring materials is not very easy, so, um, we will, we'll put that down as soon as we, as soon as we get it.
Good deal.
We're running the bandway machine. Uh, we have more time this year because of the cuts that we had to make in our surface treatment mileage. It's currently on Frederick's Butte code. Um, I guess one thing I wanted to note on that is we, we historically have concerns on Frederick's Butte route. We are taking the time right now to use that machine to put the road back into a condition that allows for safer travel, meaning lower speeds. And the work that we're doing there for the public's knowledge does not change the classification of the road. It's, it's not going to become a, a more highly maintained route because of the work we're doing there. We're just simply restructuring what should, what the gravel road should be. It's still classified as a recreational access. I recognize that it gets used a lot more than that, but that's the true classification of that road.
Yeah, I think there's been a lot of little discussion about that in the community, and just people wanting to know and.
Yeah, just because we're restructuring doesn't mean that we're gonna pay it.
Correct.
You're, you're making it a little bit narrower.
Every, every gravel road that we have in our, in our plan, if you will, our actual, um, published transportation plan is twenty-four to twenty-six feet wide. There are spots on Frederick's Butte Road that exceed thirty-five to thirty-eight feet, so that wide of a surface of a road encourages traffic to drive as fast as they want. That also adds to the maintenance of the road because the faster traffic is going, the less material stays on the road, the more washboards there are. So yes, we are narrowing the road, but we're narrowing it to the specifications that we have in, in the county for our own criteria, our own traffic safety plan. Um, two travel lanes of twelve to thirteen feet encourage safer travel and lower speeds. And the plus side to that for maintenance is that the road stays in condition, satisfactory condition longer.
Okay, over.
Um, I, I guess just for noteworthy and only because I had several constituents call in and mention this, um, our cyclical maintenance long-term plan that was kinda instituted in twenty sixteen is, is turning and showing its successes. Uh, recently, there was a, a major weather event that went through kinda between a del and flush. Um, state had a lot of, uh, they had closure for a while on mudslides and so forth. We, all of our drainage facilities acted as though they should have. I had one day of some minor cleanup, but the reality is that the maintenance cycle that we're on, um, produced, you know, our, our facilities and they worked as though they should. So we didn't have hardly any damage from this most recent weather event. Um, we bought, we purchased some, and I think I talked about this at Road Advisory, some cattle crossing warning signs, uh, for the CB Highway. And we've recently put those up, um, already have witnessed personally and, and then with some constituents calling in that it is helped with the speed of traffic on that road where the actual open range is. Um, and hopefully will keep people from
Where the hell?
Hitting, hitting the cattle that are on the road at times. Um, they, I didn't bring you guys a picture, but they're, they're a ten inch LED, uh, flashing bulb that has a shade on it. It's similar to the one that you've seen there, uh, Lehman's on three ninety-five. It is a lot brighter. You can actually see it when you turn off of, um, you can actually see it when you turn off of three ninety-five one to CB Highway. And the first one is just before you get to the oasis that shows that part line, so. And then the other end is at the Brimwell Road, which is where the majority of the cattle are congested, if you will, for back and forth for water. So those are, those are up and have been installed.
Great.
Um, let's see. I hope to here in the near future bring you a road use agreement that we can, um, look through and get attached to the conditional use process, um, that will allow for road use agreements, um, in an official capacity for large commercial, industrial, solar, whatever it may be site in the county to protect these road assets. Working with the legal counsel currently, I think you were copied on the back and forth exchange.
Yeah, good. We had a lot of back and forth and some good points that she pointed out when you sent the first draft. You, you sent a good response with some things to be fixed and that you did fix and so, um, honestly, the legal counsel just hasn't much of other things on their plate right now. So we were just kind of maybe it wasn't a came and get rush.
Okay, so. So as soon as I can make those adjustments and we can get the legal counsel to review it, then I'll bring it back as an agenda item so we can move forward on it and get a stamp. And then lastly, the other copy I gave you was of, of an OAR that discusses engineering, surveying, and architectural needs of, uh, for contracting agencies. Uh, small estimate fees, the estimate fee to be paid under the contract to not exceed a hundred thousand. This is, this is most likely, and I wanted to show you guys this, um, because in this process of acquiring engineering staff and as part of the bigger stewardship and oversight of these, um, projects, uh, flat projects specifically, there will have to be quality assurance and quality control and we will have to contract that out. I would rather use, as I discussed earlier, a local agency for that. And so I'll be bringing those contracts to you in the near future. The dollar amounts estimated are actually in that MOA for both those projects, for the initial construction engineering and then also for the management of, which is the uh, quality control and quality assurance. So, um, Civ tests, the actual aggregate testing during production, um, and then inspection daily, which is what the stewardship and oversight from the feds wants on our projects.
That's the CE line?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
And then I think it's a CM. I, I should have kept that in front of me, but.
CD, CM, CN.
So this, uh, PE is the first, um, which is the, that'd be the like sixty percent engineering and then the CE line. I'm sorry, I said that wrong. So, um, for both projects would be the dollar amount estimated for that.
Good.
Okay? Thanks for your time.
Gotcha. Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate it.
I probably won't be back tomorrow, but you'll have to let me know what we decide on the local access and it, and if it is just as easy as, um, collecting in specific projects, we, we certainly can then review it at the budget.
Okay, alright. Sounds good. Alright.
Okay. We have a timed item at ten thirty. Um, Ms. Antle is here, so.
We'll go ahead and go to you if you'd like to.
Sure, it'll be quick.
Move on for the day after this. So let you all move on for the day after.
Exactly. So it's been a little while since I gave an update on our, my program, so I wanted to come and give you guys that. First off, I took a national accreditation class and test last week, passed, yay. Um, I have Oregon's accreditation exam in November. We gotta work for a year, um, under the Oregon veteran rules, so that's what I'll do. So I'll take that in, in October and then I'll be duly accredited, so just gives me a little bit more information. Um, the big thing that's happening right now, I'm sure a lot of people have seen in the news, the PAC Act finally passed after a lot of, um, crazy back and forth. Um, that I think is going to increase a lot of activity in my office. It expanded a lot of um, healthcare and presumptives for our Vietnam and Gulf War veterans. So really, really big um, win for those demographics. So I'm advertising a lot about that because I think we're really gonna see a lot of, uh, claims that need to get filed for service-connected disabilities for both of those groups. So I'm doing advertising and radio, um, spots regarding all of that to encourage people to come in and see me for that. And, um, just kind of a little update in terms of activity. Fourth quarter last year, we filed twenty-five new claims, appealed eight denials and, um, saw retroactive awards for veterans of forty-five thousand dollars. And that was just, um, April, May, and June. So I've already met with, um, twenty-five veterans for claims filings between June, or July first and now. So that activity's there and I've had a lot of great feedback about the office move. Um, so it's been, it's been a well-received, so, yeah.
Good.
So for those that don't know, the Veterans Office has traditionally been down in Memorial Hall. You went up to, uh, the main floor. And, uh, it's working out good.
It is, yes, really good. So that's just kind of a little update about what's happening with us, so.
Good.
Okay.
Good.
What was the name of the test that you just passed?
The national, so it was through the National Association of County Veteran Service Officers, NACVSO. So it's a national accreditation organization.
Okay.
Yeah.
Nice.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess we'll just keep plowing ahead here. Let you guys have any other suggestions. Next up is the Connect Oregon Grant Agreement number COVIII, or is that three?
Could be, it could be.
One.
Uh, it's just one.
COV one-one-one dash.
I, they're I's, right?
I's.
Okay.
Dash zero-one-three. So this grant agreement between the state of Oregon and the county, this is the one that, um, we recently were awarded for, for railroad in the amount of eight hundred and
Uh, eight hundred and ninety-two.
Eight hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. And it will replace an estimated one point five miles of antiquated seventy-five to ninety-pound rail over bridges and their approaches or select curves in the Pitt River Canyon. So this is the Connect Oregon Grant that we were successful on this grant. It's just now coming through.
Just a, just a footnote, some of that rail was over a hundred years old that we're replacing.
Okay.
The total project costs are roughly about one point three million. And so, it's a pretty good overhaul. So thanks.
Okay.
Tell them to be quiet when they go by Birch Street, would you? Don't blow the whistle on Birch Street.
Tooth the horn while you're there.
That is good news, yay.
Let the record show.
We'll do that. Keep honking that horn till you move, Gerald.
Good to hear your voice, Bart, even if I can't see you, probably better than I can, huh?
Yeah, it's, it's a good thing.
Yes, yes. Missing you down here.
Okay, any questions on the, uh, Connect Oregon Grant for Lake County rail replacement? Pretty straightforward.
No questions. I'm, I'm pretty satisfied. It's a good deal.
Yeah. Okay.
And we've got some public comment topic.
I assume Mr. Knowles will talk to us about his topic later.
I imagine so.
Um, next up then is the Guardianship IGA. Ms. Melanie, do you have some background you'd like to share with us?
Mm-hmm. I'd like to, sure. Um, so this is for people who need assistance remaining in their home. And this would serve one to two people with our five thousand dollars each year. And it'd help them pay bills, organize medical appointments, DMV appointments, whatever they need. They'll just have some extra help to help them stay at home. Um, Lake, Lake District isn't able to contribute this year, and so I pulled IGA from, um, last session. But I didn't realize that we could still support one to two people in the county just with our five thousand. So I think that's exciting. So I talked to our contact for the position and she would still prefer to go forward with serving one to two people.
So if you combo our dollars with Klamath and whatnot, it still keeps people going and, and helps out people in Lake County as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Where's this funding coming out of again?
Two fifteen. Potentially, if you guys approve it.
Something planned on over a year ago, wasn't it?
Yeah, and I have the meeting minutes where you guys approve taking it out of two fifteen. Um, but then it, it took almost a year to get the IGA together and work out some of the details, so we're ready to move forward.
At this point, the health district's been, uh, is pulled from being able to contribute?
Just this year, and so we'll see how next year looks. I, I think they're still eager to serve the need in the community. Um, they just have to make some hard choices right now.
No, absolutely.
Okay. Anything else to add or questions? So when we take action on this tomorrow, we're gonna need to vote again on it?
Just the IGA.
Just the IGA.
Mm-hmm. You guys voted for approving the money and now we're just doing this agreement.
Okay.
Yeah, we approved the location of where we were gonna pull it from, but.
Okay. Okay. Anything else on that one?
Not for me.
Proposal for codification. Again, Ms. Melanie.
So I think this is an exciting opportunity. I know we didn't plan on it. And so, um, none of the budgets that the commissioners maintain could sustain this cost. Um, so how this started, I can't take credit for. Todd Smith went to Jefferson County to learn about their nuisance program. And they helped him with some of the ordinance for their nuisance. And he was blown away with how they were codified and how easy it is to navigate, yawn. So then I met with these folks with Todd the next week. And we went through the service they provide. And they'll go through our ordinances, new and old. Some of them are, they just type written, they'll upload those, they'll do a legal review, make sure that they comply with current laws. Um, For example, our planning ordinances haven't been updated since 1989. And they would go through that and update it. They'll work with each department head that it would fall under, and they put it all in one place. And it'd be cohesive with what we already have on our webpage, so people wouldn't even know they're leaving their webpage. It all has the same look and format. But it's gonna be so easy for them to navigate. You'll type in fence height or fence, and then it'll bring up everything that you could think of, every ordinance that'll have to do with a fence. And that, so that's gonna be really easy for our public to understand, like what's expected. They're not gonna be blindsided by anything because right now we have our county ordinances on one page, and then we have some departments that don't have their ordinances on that page. And so they think they know, but then there, it's just a lot of navigation, and we think it'll make it easier. Plus, this is something that's overdue, I think. A lot of our ordinances are out of date. We don't have them in the current numbering system, which isn't the end of the world. But for us to do this on our own, it's, it's a mountain. We don't have the capacity to have our attorney go through each one and to do all the hearings. It would, it'd take years. So I'm really excited about this. I tried to get two other quotes to see if this was a good deal. And the other company that does, Deschutes County, that I found out was different. These guys do so many people in Oregon, as you can tell from the proposal, that it was hard to find a lot of competitors. But the other company that I asked about, they don't do legal review. And so that would put us back on our attorney to review everything. And I don't think we have the time for her to do that. So it's $17,000. There's an annual hosting fee, but then they also do the review as we submit it to them. The way the process would work would be they'd go through, get it all ready, and it'll probably take maybe eight months still. It says take four, but they've gotta work with our department heads and their time.
We've had no work done on that.
Yeah.
Haven't been here so much.
So it's a, it's a big deal. So then we'd have one new ordinance that would rearrange all the numbers, and then it would assign the new numbering system. And then we could update them all in one swoop, potentially, if you guys approve it. And I know it's something that's a little excessive, but it's really needed too, so. And all the department heads are, that this would affect are excited, I think, to have everything updated because it's overwhelming for some of them.
So if we go to the solid two pages of who they currently have as customers, we could go to any of their websites and check that out.
Yeah.
And even Jefferson County, check out how that's gonna flow and work.
And I checked him out, and there's different ways, like we can, there's a little difference. Like you can have different presentations with your ordinances. And then they'll work with us on that when we get to that point. But then they have a feature for ADA visibility when you could just type in, like, I need it to look like this. Like I need this kind of contrast. And it'll make it easier for the people at home using their computer to read it and understand it. And then it also has a feature where you can click it and it goes to the ORS or it goes to our meeting minutes that led to that action. And this is the why behind the ordinance. And so I think that would be nice for folks to, like, have, like, the background just right there to understand, like, why did these commissioners do this? And why is this law like this, you know? But it's a big task, it's a little expensive. It's not as expensive as I thought it was going to be when she said we'd be, we could make payments. And then there's the payment plan towards the back where you pay per stage. So I, I, I hope we'll be able to pay for it all this year, but we might be making some payments next year if you guys approve it, just depending on the availability of some of the department heads to work with these people.
Well, commissioners, I don't know what you guys think, but I think that this is the next step towards serving the public and making things easier for them. I think it can also pay for itself in the code enforcement world, where things get done right the first time and they have the rules to play by. Or they even build the fence or things like that versus having to be told later that they have to either shorten their fence or, or move it because they didn't follow codes. You know, and that's just one example. Yeah, it's not cheap, and yeah, it's got an annual fee, $600, but certainly goes towards serving the public and how they can do business in Lake County. I don't know what you guys think.
I agree very. Our ordinances are archaic at best. And working on this for a year or more, just trying to get things rolling, it's been hell. So I'm all for it. It's way more money than I thought it'd be, but that's great.
Well, when you think of, like, attorney fees per hour, you know, like, I think that's a big chunk of it. And then they proofread everything too, and they, um, so I knew it was going to be expensive, but I was thinking it'd be even more, but, so. Just because we've had some hefty attorney fees lately.
Commissioner Williams?
Public comment.
I didn't know if you wanted to first.
No, I, I'll wait.
Okay.
Melanie, I guess my question is on the user-friendly aspect of it. I think that is really, really important. I know that you guys need to get the legal aspect of it done, but if you're not getting it so that I can understand it and I can access it, you really haven't accomplished anything. So I hope it's that twofold aspect.
That's our intent, because it'll be by category, but then it'll also have that search feature at the top where you can type in, like, if someone just walked in off the street and they just knew that I need to learn about dogs, they'll type in dog and everything that references a dog between the fees for dogs and the clerk's office and nuisance and all these different ordinances that talk about dogs will be right here, and you can do all of your homework without spending hours going through the entire website, so.
Great step forward, I think.
And I can't take credit, Todd's the one who had this idea and really will ask me to help him work on it, so.
And Gerald needs to know it by heart, all those citations he's gonna get.
If we can get it so Mark can understand it, we're good.
Okay.
Well, I think, I think one of the things I wanna do then is go look at some of these places and look at it for myself, just see how it looks like.
Right.
And we got a solid two pages of cities and counties listed here that, you know, are taken care of in the state of Oregon, so. Can mail around a little bit, check it out.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking, go look at some of these websites and just see what we could expect.
Yeah.
The other thing was on the financial side of it, and I know it's gonna be a little expensive. Maybe we wanna piecemeal it out a little bit or something, and maybe we wanna do half of it this year and half of it later, or do, split that payment in half? Do we wanna do something like that maybe? Just to make it more palatable, you know, so we can keep it on a budgeted level. The, uh, the other thing is I would like to prioritize codifying, you know, certain ordinances first. You know, things like, well, you know, the dog, the fire. Burn ordinance is always something that people are looking for every single year. They're always looking for specifics. The other thing would be, you know, nuisance, you know, debatement and things like that. We stick with some of those primary ordinances that we have that people are typically searching for. And we hit those first. And maybe that would give us an idea of what we can expect also on our end. But we could break this over into a year period. I don't know. Thoughts on that? I mean, it's, it's $16,000. We, we spend a lot more than $16,000 typically on a lot of our items. But I know that this year's come with a lot of fiscal challenges. And we're trying to, you know, just cut costs where we can. I think it's a great project. I think it, it really kind of helps step, put us forward and bring our ordinances up to date. And I think it does serve the public. It's a tremendous asset to people to be able to, to have comprehensive codes at their disposal and availability. What do you guys think about maybe piecemealing it out a little bit?
Well, I guess I'd wanna talk to.
Margaret.
Margaret. Margaret.
Craig. She's their CEO that I've been working with.
Gotcha. Okay. And, you know, I know we do have some money coming in at some point with local assistance fund. This, this could easily be covered by something like that.
Easy.
So whatever makes sense, you know, if we need to split it up, split it up. If it needs to just get done, so it gets done, and then, you know, that's something I would consider too.
I mean, they're gonna get an annual payment of 600 bucks a year. I mean, we're not going anywhere, you know, I mean. So are they, would they be agreeable then to us doing some of that payment for the next year? Doing a payment plan?
Yeah, well, and then if you look in there, in the, towards the back.
I was kinda looking at that.
Um, you'll, you make payments by work as it's completed.
Okay, so if we were to do payment plan, it would be based on the work that we kind of gave them? So again, it would go back to kind of piecemealing and prioritizing what we wanna hit?
Yeah. Yeah, it looks like a 25% upfront, 25% after submission of administrative review, 35% after submission of draft, and then the balance after delivery. So 25, 25, 35, and final. That's not a bad split, you know? So I think it kind of meets what you're looking for versus a lump payer or something.
Right.
As we get it, we pay for it.
Right. And it's, how long did you say the process would be, eight months?
Well, they think they can do it really quickly in, in four months. I just know, like, how busy some of our department heads are, and, um, they'll have to work with our department heads too, and so I think that might put it out. I just, I would love to have it done in four months. And maybe they won't be that quick. But, um, I don't wanna get anyone's expectations too high. So maybe eight at the most, maybe six, I don't know. We'll have to see. With our ordinances, the way they are, there's some that aren't, you are trying to get all. And so they'll go, they'll work with the clerk and get, like, our charter uploaded into this, um, Home Rule stuff, you know, whatever, just like everything that the board has ever passed since it's been formed.
Again, it sounds good to me.
Yeah. I'm really excited.
I'd like to hear a little bit more too about what the web hosting and the $600 a year is getting us.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's like annual amendments, um, they.
New, new ordinances.
New ordinances, new legal review of our new ordinances if we amend them. If something comes up that we didn't think of, like, like the planning department paying for fees out of their line item potentially, they'd update that for us. Um, that's one thing I'll get some, they, they're supposed to have them updated very quickly. But after we approve them, it'll go to them and they will go through and make sure everything's up to their standard. When you go look at these counties and municipalities and things, I think you'll be very impressed with their quality of work. Though, and proofreading and structure and how easy it is to navigate.
Sure, we're not as big as project as some places.
Well, they got Marion County.
Yeah.
They did, that was one of the only counties on the list, they hit Marion County's code.
And then there's some little cities and towns too, you know.
They hit Burns and other places, yeah. So, good.
Okay. Cool, check it out.
Okay, thanks.
All right, the time is 10:07. At 10:30 is our time limit for a GIS coordinator position. There'll be a panel of people talking. And then Dave Knowles still has the order for cancellation of the link with personnel property taxes. Do we wanna go to liaison updates? Everybody have anything?
I don't know if I have too many liaison updates today. Still in the middle of a lot of stuff. Yeah.
I could just say that, you know, ODFW has let us know that they have filed intent to, they've identified 14 streams, rivers in Lake County, and have intent to apply for in-stream water rights. We've already had one Zoom meeting last week, there's another one this evening at 5:00 PM. I think Commissioner Williams is gonna try to attend that.
Yeah, you attended the last one.
I attended the last one.
Good you gave this up.
We're having some good discussions on that. We'll see where that goes, but we're hoping that we can have further discussions with ODFW before they file. See if we can come up with some other ideas. Just wanna say broadband is coming along really well. Stone Ventures that got the contract to do the feasibility studies for Lake County and Clamath County already has finished feasibility study for Lake County. And this will allow us now to apply for broadband dollars to help potentially attract customers who wanna come in and do additional broadband into Lake County and to fiber into the home and businesses. Um, it's a very competitive application process. We've also heard from a business that has some interest in the area, potentially applying to, there's lots of them interested. They're very guarded about what they wanna do and whatnot, so no details on that. But I just wanna say, generally speaking, things are looking up for Lake County as far as broadband potential. And it's gonna be an interesting fall in the next six months plus to see where, where things land as far as broadband dollars. We obviously rank really high because we're rural frontier. We don't have much service, generally speaking, other than line of sight, you know, type of things. And our one mine from Central Link into Lakeview and up to Paisley, and then Hunter Communications works off of that out to Adele Plush. But other than that, you know, things are a little bit limited. Up north, we do have LSN, comes into, or into Christmas Valley and out to school. And then Central Link works off of that as well, so. We'll see. Hopefully, things continue to develop. So, but I'm just saying it's pretty positive, and so far, our investment into getting that feasibility study and whatnot has paid off very well. Skoid is definitely helping out with that. Good. You got anything, Commissioner Alwerson?
Um, so I talked to Ronnie this morning. I'll have you guys that Fairgrounds proposal by the day. She's supposed to send me all that information, what we talked about yesterday, Barry.
Okay.
Let's see. I was on the phone with Steve Vincent, um, last week with Avista Utilities. He's trying to wrangle a engineer for their company to give us the exact amount of what natural gas line would cost. See. That's about all I got right now. Can you guys hear me, cause you froze on my end?
Yeah, we can hear ya.
Hear it loud and clear.
There you go, alright.
So Commissioner Robertson is, we talked about this in our last meeting, he's referring to, um. An email we got a while back from Representative Greg Smith. Says the Speaker's Office has tasked a group of rural legislators with developing a potential funding package to support rural economic development. Simply asked to do a deep dive into industrial lands capitalization fund. But Representative Owens has also been tasked with this, there's about five different categories and. We're hoping that housing potentially can be one of those categories for us that we can request the dollars, sounds like Commissioner.
Yeah, we're looking, I'll, I'll have a proposal for you guys probably either today or tomorrow. Um, we'll have that get settled, be getting ready to be sent in. Not much to report other than the fact that, you know, it's all what we've discussed prior on the housing, you know, we had a work session. Couple weeks ago where we talked about maybe going for a little bit higher of a number, uh, you know, between two to three, about three million. And simply because it's the largest. Uh, pool of money for individual projects. And what is it, like thirty million, I believe it is? And it's prior, it prioritizes smaller rural communities and this is not affordable housing nor, um, low income housing.
Yes, thirty million.
It is thirty million. And it's, the idea behind it is, uh, again, we got this idea from Casita. Uh, we've kinda talked about this in previous meetings. Uh, Clamath County did this about a year ago and they brought together a pool of investors of, of ten to eleven investors. Put about a hundred thousand dollars in each and then it was matched with some other dollars from the county and so forth. That were able to build a pot of money that they could go forward and buy. Pieces of land and then develop those and then sell them and then they keep like an evergreen fund going forward. And so you're all constantly able to add to your housing. Pool, so to speak, so that, and, and using local contractors, local investors and so it benefits the, the community in that way. But we can kinda keep projects going. The, uh, we've got a great proposal put forward, I think we're probably gonna ask for a couple million. I wanna talk with Representative Owens and get a better feel for what a realistic ask is for a small county like ours. Even though we are the ones that are prioritized. I just have no real feel ultimately, I was thinking about this last week, I really just don't have a feel for what the competition will be. Around the entirety of the state.
Yeah, the last sentence of that regional rural revitalization says. Funds will be reserved for rural areas with a preference for counties with historically low growth rates and underinvestment in housing infrastructure. Check, check, check. And then Commissioner Robertson is, uh, talking about fairgrounds, uh, again, Rep Owens has that one. And.
And that one, Barry, will be eight hundred and fifty thousand. We already have it all prepared because we just applied for that grant, the Oregon Parks and Rec Grant, which we didn't receive. And so we have all that paperwork together already. Um, it consists of some electrical work, some, uh, vaulted toilets. Some work on our, uh, RV park. Making it so that some of the spaces will actually have full hookups, including sewer. It'll move our dump station from right in front of the house to around by the RV park. Make everything a little more handy, there's some other things on there too that I'm missing. Um, I do have a question for Commissioner Williams on your housing project. It all sounds awesome, um, is there a time limit? That they have to have those houses built within a certain amount of time, so they're not stretching it out? You know that?
That's a really good question, Mark, honestly, it would be left to the. Governing, the, the board basically of the project and so Denise Stillwell has gotten me a, um, job description. Uh, for Schoet, Schoet will be hiring in person and they will be the project manager for this, for Lake County's. Project or program and, uh, it's a great job description, I shared it with Barry, I don't know if you've got a copy of it yet. But basically.
Barry said it was, you're doing a great job on that, I haven't seen it yet.
Okay, I'll make sure it gets sent off to you because Denise does want our comments on it to add to. Because it's really going to be ours and if we end up with a pool of investors wanting to jump in as well and be part of that. And have a committee to basically put together and choose what type of houses we build. We would have, they would have the same discretion over what time limit, um, there is for getting those buildings. Completed, the, the, the big part of this is, um, Randy pointed out. Is getting contract, is the interviewing of the contractors and getting contractors that will do what they say they're going to do. And I, and I would imagine timeframes are a big part of that, so, um.
Yeah, that's just one question I've never asked Randy, so.
Right, well, to answer your question, to my knowledge, I would imagine it would be at the discretion of, you know, that if. If that board and the project manager wants to say, look, I want a house built and I need it done in this timeframe, can you do that? Well, I would imagine that's one of the criteria to consider when interviewing the different contractors.
Sounds good, thank you for your work on that.
Hey, bet.
And so to wrap up this discussion, um, the county is able to apply for three different categories or three of their best proposals. Third one that I was thinking of is, you know, we're busy trying to finalize the North End Lakeview Water Project. Which would basically go from the cemeteries out to the LDS church. We've secured, uh, some dollars, but with the rising costs and everything, I feel like. We're gonna come up a little bit short on that if we don't ask for a little bit more, so. This one here, that's called Industrial Lands Fund Capitalization, it has twenty-five million dollars and it's under Representative Smith. It says assist Oregon communities with funding infrastructure improvements to develop their industrial land into shovel-ready industrial sites thus greatly. Increasing their ability to attract and grow manufacturing firms. So I think that water project may fit pretty good and get us into the category where we give the thing. More security fund.
Do you think that's gonna probably be in the neighborhood of about a half a million?
I think that's what we should, somewhere in that neighborhood is where we should probably be asking for.
Five hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand or so?
I agree. And thank you for your work on that, Barry.
Yeah, it's ongoing, so. Anyway, I guess what I'm thinking, guys, and is we pretty much have to have some shovel-ready projects. You're super close on the housing thing, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Robertson, you already got the fairgrounds thing that's there and I've, and I've got the North End Lakeview Water thing that's real close as well, so. I just feel like those are our best opportunities. If we try to get one that starts from the ground level up, I just think we will have some little bit tougher challenges getting a piece of the pie.
Yeah. Stick with the top three.
Okay, any further discussion? Our next timed item is at ten thirty, let's take a ten minute break and we'll resume at ten thirty. Okay, we're gonna come back into session, it's ten thirty-one. We have a timed item here for GIS coordinator position, also Mr. Knowles, um, we do have another. Thing of business with the order for cancellation of delinquent personal property taxes, do you wanna take care of that one first or?
Yeah, I did, I got so focused on a solo one, so this personal property tax is on a deceased owner, um. It's personal property, manufactured homes on real property and it's actually, uh, our. Newsness Coordinator came after me and they wanted to use this as a, one of the first to have the homes destroyed and removed. And there's taxes against them and it's a fitting that we informed that. And I do have to apologize, these, those two homes probably should have been on the ones I ran in June. And I actually don't have much to trigger manufacturing homes to be written off unless we discover and go on to them and I. So I called my software provider and I said, I just got caught with my pants down, just these two houses, she got written off in June. So I did a query, we have four hundred personal property counts in foreclosure. And so they're at different levels and so, and most of them are lived in or have something attached to them, it's like a delinquent tax. We don't foreclose on them because we can't take ownership on them, because we don't wanna pay rent. Or, you know, a manufactured home is a deficit, not an asset for us. So they just stay on the books and continue that, till somebody dies or they get demolished or we deem them uncollectible. I just got through collecting sixteen hundred dollars on, in tax on a manufactured home that wasn't worth anything from a landlord. Because they had an estate and they had the funds to pay it and I made them stay, I stayed on until they paid. Cause the warrants and the fees and the credit stuff goes against them, so that bottom of the table. Ted Dodge is not coming back to pay these taxes.
I don't have any questions on that. Either of you? Commissioner Robertson, are you back with us?
I am.
Okay, gotcha, forgot to ask, sorry, when we came back in session. Okay? Alright.
Mark, can you hear us alright up there?
I can hear you loud and clear, David.
Okay, I like how, but you know.
I really gotta go out twice, it's been terrible weather the whole time. But we did catch a couple of them, but if you talk nice to me, I like give you some.
Did you, uh, uh, did you get all the emails with the job description and the creating a photographer position letter I wrote up? Will you have a chance to review that?
Yep.
Perfect.
Okay, so next up then is our timed item of GIS coordinator position. Who would like to take the lead here?
I think I'm gonna drive on this and then I got my backup plan here. So, I am very transparent on this, I've been after this for several years and we needed to have the perfect storm to make it happen. And we needed to have a place to, to house that and the funding and a position and all that. With Karen Anderson retiring and reconfiguring that position. Is what I'm looking to have happen and that's why I have all the players here involved with Darwin from planning and. Daryl from Surveyor's Office, so originally I'm stealing Daryl's assistant. But I wanna make it, GIS work is, a lot of it is project work and it's, it's not a, a time sensitive thing. When people come in with surveys and plots and do the survey work, that's time sensitive, that has to be done. So in my heart, the survey work does take precedence over GIS work as far as timing goes. And, and, and I'm not gonna speak for Daryl as far as elaboration, what needs to have happened on that, but that's in a priority world, that's important. If we were to get the town contract for GIS nine-one-one services, that also would take a priority for that, for that. To have done and everything else to kinda fall in behind that. I hope you guys have all had a chance to review the letter that I provided this morning, it's just a quick overview. Anybody have any questions on that?
About this one?
Yes.
When you talk about current salary. Just wanna make sure I understand what current salary is.
He's not, he's not talking about fully loaded, he's just talking about the, the salary.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not.
That's all benefits, right?
No, it's not taxes, it's not.
That's fund.
That's funding for the debt plus benefits. So in my, in my heart, moving forward, the benefit package wouldn't change much, but the funding would.
Some of that salary came out of survey.
That's correct. I don't know.
Fifty percent.
How much?
It's fifty percent.
The current salary, that sounds about right. Which would have been what, gee, you have that on top of your head?
Current right now is forty, about forty-one thousand. Totally, so, so.
And that's after COLA?
About twenty, twenty and change.
Okay, so. I don't have any questions so far.
Alright. We have a wild card in this deal, that's the town of Lakeview. And I've gone to three meetings, I've gone to two meetings and I've met with the town manager multiple times. We still have not received from their current contract just this morning, just late last night, I got an email from her that I read this morning. They got the last invoice, which was a little bit disheartening for me, but my last contract that I had was given to.